Mine off.
I was just trying to get the tape on.
Please stand.
Uh oh.
Would you please join Councilman Case in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for the prayer, please.
Our heavenly Father, Creator of heaven and earth, Lord, we thank you for this day that you have given to us. And Lord, I pray for your blessings on this meeting tonight, that you'll give the councilmen and the mayor wisdom, Lord, as they decide the future of our city. In all these things, we pray your will be done, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank Pastor. Call to order our city council meeting of October 1st. Second item on the agenda is public comments, announcements, recognitions. Do we have anything?
No.
Kim, no. Third item is our consent agenda, items A, B, and C. A is the approval of minutes of a special city council meeting of September 10th. B is the approval of a cooperative agreement between the city and the Guthrie Edmond Rural Regional Airport and the Department of Agriculture, keep deers out of the runway. And C is the approval of the extension of the environmental response services agreement between the city and EMI. I'll entertain a motion to approve. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. unanimous approval to approve the consent agendas A, B, and C. Item number four is a rezoning application that has been removed, withdrawn by the owner, by the requestor. And so that will be taken up at a future time if so desired, but it's been removed at the present time. Item number five is a discussion of possible action to approve city staff to solicit bids on the Harrison Avenue Bridge Stormwater and Roadway Construction Project. Staff comments. Leroy?
This drawing is in your packet. The blue is the base bid. Of course, this area is a bridge. And then this is the main inlet from Wentz coming south. And there will be another inlet here. So Phase One, or the base bid, would include building retaining wall to stabilize the stadium brick, or rock wall, which would be right in here. Stormwater improvements with four junction boxes. Of course, fill the cavity and then only repair the paving disturbed by the project. Alternate One is in the red shaded area. And Alternate One would add additional stormwater improvements east to a junction box by Bob Powell's building. And you can see the corner of Mr. Powell's building right here that would give them some relief from stormwater with inlets on the north and south side of Harrison. And again, only repairing the portion of the street that is disturbed, so it would be patched. Alternate Number Two would be going additional stormwater improvements west to tie in where the future Division Street Streetscape Project would end and then tie into that to bring it over to here. And you would be adding two junction boxes and inlets on the north and south side of Harrison. And then again, just patching the area of the street where it is disturbed. So that's kind of how it's broken down into different phases. And alternate number three would be the full length of the project. And alternate number three is new pavement of the entire street rather than just patch it where it was disturbed by the work. Sidewalks, new sidewalks, period lighting from Mr. Powell's building back to the west to tie into the Division Street Streetscape Project. And it would match the Streetscape in design and appearance. The cost of the various alternatives. If the base bid, the estimated cost is $917,645.68. Alternate Number One, which is the drainage improvements to the east to serve Mr. Powell's building, would be an additional $75,720. And at the bottom, you can see the cumulative as you go across. Alternate Bid Number Two would be an additional $145,994, the estimate. And that would take it, of course, west to tie into the Division Streetscape Project. And then Alternate Number Three, resurfacing the whole street with new sidewalks and period lighting, would be an additional $598,000. So if you did off of the base bid of the three alternates, you'd be looking at roughly $1.7 million.
Only you'd get a finished surface when you're done?
Correct.
As if a patched surface.
Correct. Now, when you don't necessarily have to make the decision tonight as to what you're going to put out for bids, because we can put it all out for bids. And then, once we get the bids in, then see what the actual bids are. Then you can decide whether you're going to do the base bid, Alternate One, Two, or Three.
That's what I'd like to see.
Yes. I just, we just didn't as staff not want to present it to you in the pieces as we were going to bid it out without you being aware. So if you're in agreement after we get through tonight, what we do is put it all out for bids. Then, when we open bids, we bring it back and look at what the actual true cost is to do it. The final part of the presentation on this is if we are going to do the base bid in Alternate One and Two, we would be ready to go out to bids on October 8th, open bids on the 29th, present to council the bids on the 5th of November, and actually start on the 19th. And then, depending on whether it's just a base bid, Alternate One and Two, it would extend the construction period slightly. If we're going to bid it out and include Alternate Three, it would delay the advertising bids from October 8th to November 8th. And we'd probably be looking at June 30th. So if we want to bid out the base bid and all three alternates, we're probably looking at a November 8th advertising for bids.
Why is that? Because of the total?
Because the team manager just keeps adding to the project.
Well, could we look at an alternate number four? Where we have the intersection of Oklahoma and Wentz? I mean, it floods about the size of the Mineral Wells Lake. And I don't know, it doesn't look like, is there no entrance? Where does that water go? Because the Prairie Wolf Spirits Landscape Timbers always end up in the middle of the intersection when we get a heavy rain. And the rains also, I mean, flood the basements of those two buildings on the corner. I'm sorry, the northeast corner where the bicycle shop is and then where the Mexican food restaurant is. The water gets up to those, I mean, it comes within a foot of my office door up onto the sidewalks when we get those heavy rains. So I don't know if we can do any additional, get the water the heck out of here from Oklahoma intersection to tie into this or not, but...
And I'll try to address that question. When, the last two years, when we applied to ACOG for a grant to do this project, we were going to do substantial stormwater drainage improvements. Right now, there is about a four-foot tube that goes from Oklahoma down to Harrison to this point at Wentz. And from the temple back to Oklahoma is the stormwater basin that drains that way. And then, if you go to the west, there's a break around Division that drains this way. And then, on the other side of Division, it drains back towards, of course, the depot. This four-foot tube, we've had cambered and it is still open and serving. But that was put in back in the 30s when the stadium was originally built. And that goes under the fire department. This tube goes under the football field and baseball field by the fire station and on down to, is it Snake Creek, if I remember correctly?
Snake, yeah, correct.
When we were doing the larger project and applying for the grant, this tube no longer has enough capacity to serve the amount of stormwater that's in this drainage basin going all the way back east to the temple because you have additional houses and parking and things. So the amount of stormwater has increased over time. We were going to apply another tube on top of this one and have two tubes come to this point. And that would have given more relief to Oklahoma. Now, we can do some improvements, but currently, this tube, drainage tube, surcharges. And there is, under the bridge, a manhole. And of course, you normally don't play football when you're getting a three- or four-inch rain. The water has been coming up when it fills up and coming out the doors there by the rock wall onto the stadium. This will, this situation will take this water to this point, which is outside of the rock walls roughly right here. And there will be water get on the stadium, but it's not going to change the situation. It's getting on there now. If you do, if you try to address Oklahoma, yes, we can do that and look, just like we're improving the drainage going east and west. We could look at doing some up to Oklahoma. But without having that second pipe installed, I'm not sure how much it would help because you're not increasing the capacity. You're just making more inlets for it to get in, but you're not adding capacity for it to go anywhere.
But then again...
If we did that, we'd probably want to look at also putting that second tube on top of the first one to give us more capacity.
But isn't, what we're doing here is going to make it drain better on Cleveland, correct?
It will make it drain better on Harrison from Division when we tie into the Streetscape Project. And it will improve the drainage around Mr. Powell's building. But it still will have the same amount of capacity. If you put the second tube over top of the existing four-inch, or four-foot tube roughly, it's oval shape, it's not four-foot round, but roughly four-foot, then you will have more capacity for it to get out quicker. This will help, but the other tube would make it better.
What I was getting at is the creek only backs up because the river does. And same thing's true here. Oklahoma only backs up because Harrison does.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So if we eliminate the backup at Harrison, is that not going to correct part of what's going on in Oklahoma to begin with?
It would provide some relief, but my understanding is because the capacity of the existing four-foot tube, it fills up and it can't get out of it fast enough to drain Oklahoma Harrison.
It's not that it's backed up at the end, it's just that it's not big enough to begin with.
Correct.
So we had a one-time plan about another four-foot tube.
Correct.
Can we implement that and go and put it to bid along with the rest of the project?
What we could do is we could do an alternate four, which would delay us some, of course. But we could look at, if you want to, add additional improvements to go up to the intersection of Wentz and Oklahoma and do some improvements there and put that in as an alternate as well.
If you have more input, in other words, if you put another four, another tube in there, what is the impact down on, for instance, the football field? Is there any impact? It seems to me like there's going to be more water coming through there.
You would get more water on, because you're allowing it to get here quicker, but it doesn't have any additional places to go when it gets here. So yes, you will have, for a short period of time, during a heavy rain event, you will have more water here on the stadium.
You'll have Oklahoma intersection on the stadium is what you're going to have?
Correct. For a short period of time.
Right.
Till it gets adjusted right now.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, it just doesn't go as fast. Eventually, you would have to, and there's really no funding sources, you would have to take that second tube that you're going to take from the middle, the intersection Oklahoma and Wentz and down to here, you would have to add another drainage tube. And probably, instead of laying on top of this one across the football field, you'd probably come out to the edge of the football field, one way or the other, and go down the side of the football field with that tube and then tie in when you get past the baseball field.
I just know Thurman's Barber Shop currently floods pretty good when we get those rains. And they just spent a lot of money renovating that building. So it'd be nice if it didn't flood anymore. It's not even Thurman's anymore. Heck, it hadn't been Thurman's in 30 years, but whatever.
It's Thurman's.
Everybody thinks it's Thurman's.
Everybody remembers Thurman's.
And if you all would like, we would, I will get with Bill. And Bill was going to be here tonight, but he had a family emergency that he had to take care of. So he couldn't be here tonight. But he was scheduled. What we can do is get the engineers to look at adding this additional drainage tube as a alternate to the project as well. And then, go out for bids for, which would be the base bid and now four alternates for us to look at.
Does it not make sense to put it out to bid in pieces versus waiting for the whole?
I think if we put the whole project out for bids at one time, you're going to get a better price because you don't have to...
Piece it together.
Well, and also mobilize. Because if you bid it at separate times, they may have a cost in there to mobilize for each one of them. And so, and then what you could do is pick which alternate you want it to do now. And say, for example, there may be some things that we can do, like if we don't want to do this, this project right now, is do it in such a way that we could put this up to here and then come back and tie into this.
At a later date.
It's something we might look at doing. Just like we've come over here so we can tie this one in, we could take something like this and go up here and then tie that tube in at a later date if we don't have the funding to do it now. But we wouldn't have to dig up this whole street if we resurfaced the entire street. And we'd be glad to go back and review that. We just realized that now that we're using 100% of local money rather than getting grant money to pay for a significant portion of it, we were just trying to be as cognizant of our limited funding as we could be.
It looks to me like we'll be far enough out to apply for another grant. From what I'm hearing.
And we could always do that. I mean, in January, in January, there is the next round. Then you would know by the spring.
There you go.
If you were awarded the grant or not. We just felt that the general public had kind of gotten tired of seeing the barrels and stuff. And a lot of people didn't understand.
His name is Bothroyd. Bothroyd, he's the one.
And a lot of people didn't, didn't understand. And I think we've talked about it at meetings, we had it on Facebook, that what we were trying to do is apply for a grant that would provide 90% of the cost of the construction. Doesn't pay for 90% of engineering, but it paid for 90% of the construction cost. And if that's palatable to the city council, then we could come in and do those things and reapply for the grant. What happened to us on the grant, the first year we applied, ACOG had a formula that, a scoring rating system, that you got readiness points. And readiness points are, you already had all the engineering work done and the design done, so you were ready to go out to bids. And you got points for that because the project happened faster. Well, you've got cities like Oklahoma City, that's in Agog, Gary, and Norm, and Edmund. Well, they have resources that they can do a lot of engineering on projects and then put them on the shelf and have them in the pipeline. And so they had an advantage over towns like Guthrie and Crescent and other towns that don't have the resources to do that. But after we received the points for the first round that we applied for, we noticed that if we'd had the readiness points, we would have got funded. So we came back to city council and we bit the bullet and we had the engineering design work done for the full project. And we applied and low and behold, they changed the ratings, scoring format. And I think they did it with good intentions because they were trying to level the playing field instead of being favorable to other, just the larger communities. But what they did, like you do a lot of things, you do things and there's unintended consequences. The way they changed the scoring was more favorable to bicycle walking paths than it was replacing bridges that need to be replaced in streets. And so this last round, the Oklahoma City got $12 million for bicycle pass. And I think Edmund got about $3 million for a street project. And nobody else got anything. They are reviewing that scoring deal. And there will be a new scoring system that I think will ensure that small towns like Guthrie get part of the funding this next time around. But we just didn't know how patient our residents were to wait another year to see if, with the new scoring formula, if we could get this funded.
Can you go back one to your timeline of putting these to bid? Or two or three, wherever it is?
There it is.
Right there. So we're already to 2020.
Yes.
With the existing whole plan.
The applications would be submitted in January and around March, April, we would know whether we would get awarded the grant.
Well, no, what I'm saying is for the whole project as a whole right now.
Yes.
If we were to put it out in the first three phases, we're already in 2020.
Correct.
Okay. So how further in 2020 are we going to be if we add Oklahoma? Is all I'm saying, the extra pipe.
13 months.
Three years. Channel. It's channels deal.
It would probably add a couple of weeks to get the...
So it's worth, it's worth doing then because we need to go after the grant. We don't want to have to shoulder a million bucks, a million seven, if we don't have to.
We haven't bid it anyway, don't we?
I thought there might have been two questions there.
No, the answer was that it was going to push it a couple of weeks, but then that puts us in line to submit for the grant, right?
Yes. And remember, if we submit for the grant, we will need to do some things like resurfacing it where it matches our Streetscape Project and do some other things that tie in, like some bump outs and some other things to get points.
I guess what I'm saying to the general public that's watching is that by adding Oklahoma and going for the grants is going to only cost us a couple, three, four weeks on top of where we're at today.
Right.
Is what I'm hearing here. And so, and possibly not have to put out any of our money on it. And so it makes sense to go for the grant. If it's only, if we're only, now if we're talking a year or 13 months, like James said, yeah, you wouldn't want to do it.
You would know, you would know around March of next year whether you got the grant funded or not.
There you go.
And so that's how long you'd have to wait. If, if we're not funded, we would be in a position to immediately put this out for bids.
And then, but when would we start construction? Not until March or April, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
It'd be, it'd probably be April or June.
We're putting it off six months.
Well, if we get the grant, how long before we're ready to break ground? We don't have to wait another six months, do we?
No, we would be ready to go out for bids about the same time.
Exactly. So we're waiting a few weeks and for a potential for it to be 100% funded or a big portion of it.
90%.
90.
Yeah.
Meaning that a big chunk of it.
The start date wouldn't be December 9th anymore, would it?
No. No, it's always, the start dates never...
Throw everything.
The start date would be next summer time, sometime.
Right. But that's pretty much where it's going to be anyway, for the most part. A little bit before then.
If you waited and applied for the grant, and this time we were successful on the grant, you would not only address the bridge and get grant funds for that, it would allow you to make substantial drainage improvements that would help the situation at both Oklahoma and Wentz and Harrison and Wentz.
And that whole area is kind of growing up a little bit. And I think it needs it, personally, just me. Unless Steve wants to write a check, then we can go ahead and just fund it now.
Well, I think the thing is, and I get lots of questions, as all of you have, as to why it's been taking so long to do something. And we have put out information saying that we have an opportunity here, folks, of having 90% of this funded by a grant.
Yeah.
And we thought for sure after the first submission, as Leroy has said, that we would be successful and then things change. Things can change again. And I think, Brian, your point is, even if they do change, we've not lost a whole lot of time.
No, and then plus we have to have the drawings.
And we've got to have this done anyway. We've got to have this done anyway. So it doesn't really change anything that we're doing today necessarily, other than adding, I guess, the fourth option. But, but it does delay saying, okay, we're going to, we're going to wait till, till this next bid, grant opportunity goes through ACOG until we decide one way or the other. That's, that's where we, that's where we fish or cut bait.
And if that's the way we decide to go, we'll make the engineers aware tomorrow to get, get everything prepared to submit the grant application. And then, when we submit the grant application, we'll come back and do another report to show what we're going to do to serve Oklahoma and all that as part of that project.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be possible, since we're dealing with a disaster of multiple intersections, that that might help us get the grant? Potentially?
Yes.
There you go.
Yeah, if we're going to get the grant, we need to tie into Oklahoma because it's the one that generates the operation. the one that generates the opportunity for the grant.
Let's do it.
Okay. Back to, back to what's in front of us, which is a motion to authorize the staff to go out and solicit bids.
That has to be...
I will entertain...
Doesn't that have to be tabled until we...
Well, I think, um, what would be good is a motion to delay bidding and reapply for the STBG grant.
Subused.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Nope, we've got a smiley face though.
Mayor, you and I can go sit down there again and have to tell us yes or no.
Okay, well, I mean, it's very, very competitive.
Maybe another couple have to go down so they get a yes.
It's, I, I, I think it's very much to save well over a million dollars to the city, well over, probably close to a million and a half. I think it's worth a few months to see, give it another shot and, and make it happen.
So long as we buy something this summer, where the government buys it, we buys it, whoever.
It's got to happen.
We've got to get something done.
We've messed around with this long enough.
Powell's building floods, Thurman's floods, everything's flooding down there, so we got to, we got to move forward on something.
Why, why it's failed and so forth.
And I don't think, I don't think we've been messing around, I think we've been trying to figure out, I think we've been trying to figure out...
Well, they're not messing around, but it's messing around.
I think, I think we've been trying to figure out the best way to use the resources that we're responsible for. Uh, and, um, and I think, I think what we're doing. We have a, we have a motion and a second to...
No, we already have it, we've all voted.
We've all voted.
Now we've all voted.
Let's see the votes. Okay, unanimous approval to, um, to prepare for the next grant cycle through ACOG with all of the options, including option four and connection to Oklahoma and, and Division. Does that cover?
Yes, I need to memorize.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay, item number six is discussion, possible action on individual council members' appointments to the Citizens Rate and Fee Advisory Committee. I think we have some information in that stack.
You know, the Citizens Rate and Fee Advisory Committee was created back in 2010 with the adoption of Resolution 2010-10. The committee is composed of seven members. The mayor and each council member shall appoint one individual who shall be a resident of the city of Guthrie. Editors note there, appointee does not have to be from the same ward as the city council member appointing them. Each appointee must be confirmed by the, a majority vote of the city council. The terms of each appointee coincide with the term of the mayor and the council member appointing them. The purpose the committee shall meet is needed to discuss rate, fee, or tax adjustments or changes and to advise the city council or board of trustees. And clearly, this committee is an advisory-only committee. Final decisions, of course, are made by the government body, the city council. Recommended appointments, at the time we did the agenda or below, Mr. Case's appointment was done, uh, and it is through, that is a typo, through 2021. So there is no need for any action on the individual appointed by Mr. Case. That was done when he first came on a couple of years ago. Council members Bothroyd and Taylor have an opportunity tonight to add their names to that list. We already have a nominee from the mayor, from council member Long, uh, from council member Thomas, and council member Channel. And if council member Taylor and Bothroyd want to add names to that, then you would be in a position to vote on the ones that are nominated through tonight.
So, I'm going to add Phil Nichols on mine.
How often does this committee meet?
It hasn't the whole last four terms that I was on.
I was on it for two years before I got on council, it's never met.
So we must not have any rates or fees needing evaluation?
Well, but I think we do, I think they need to meet.
They have met. Four, not the late five, four or five years ago.
We've not, I don't think in the last, uh, three years since I've been here, we've done any rate adjustments other than those that are set up automatically because of consumer price index. Probably the first meeting of this group is, um, and it'll be a good experience for them because it won't be as complicated as dealing with sewer and water rates. On our, um, garbage collection through Waste Connections, it's been many years since the city has looked at those rates. And what is happening is each year Waste Connections has a nerve contract, they increase their cost to us through a consumer price index, but we've not adjusted our rates. So our margin that we started out here, as they go up, our margin decreases. So the amount of money we make has decreased every year. And that'll probably be the first case they will have to look at this fall is when we get the next increase from Waste Connections, does it make sense for us to adjust our garbage collection fees or continue to let that margin, uh, decrease?
Or we throw that information out to their competitor when we put them out to bid?
We've already signed the contract with them for this year, so it would have to...
I'm talking about next time, next go-round.
We just all get burn barrels?
Yeah. No burning.
So councilman Taylor, do you have a, a name to recommend?
No, but I'll check.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll entertain then a motion to, uh, to confirm the appointees from council members to include Phil Nichols for councilman Bothroyd.
Subused.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
Unanimous approval to confirm the, um, six nominees and one to come from, uh, from councilman Taylor.
And once Mr. Taylor turns his end, we'll put it on the agenda for a vote of the full body as well.
Okay, very good. Item number seven, city manager report. Leroy?
One item back on this, if you all would, um, try to work with us to make sure we get the address and contact information of your appointees so that when we get ready to set up meetings, we'll have their contact information. So if you all would make sure Kim has that, we would appreciate it. Just briefly on city manager report, we funded in this year's budget, a accountant, special projects officer, and, uh, this is a job summary. We budgeted up to $60,000 in salary for this position. We have done a detailed job description, uh, and we are in the process of finalizing the job announcement that we will be posting. In summary, this position will research, collect, analyze, and summarize accounting information and trends utilizing the Assist Municipal Accounting and Utility Billing Software. Assist is the software, accounting software that we have. And so they'll need to be able to use the Assist software. They will prepare financial reports utilizing Excel spreadsheets, graphics, PowerPoint presentations. They will prepare and present proposals on special projects important to the city, including grants. They'll provide project oversight, management of a wide variety of assigned administrative functions, community service programs, and capital improvement projects to ensure they're delivered on time, within scope, and within budget. The minimum qualifications include a bachelor's degree in accounting from an accredited college, plus two years of experience in fund accounting for a public entity, and proven work experience in project management or an equivalent of that combination of education experience. Of course, preference would be given to someone that has a CPA. Next item, Mineral Wells Park Project. Just a reminder, we got $875,000 project and half of that is being paid from a grant from OTRD out of the Land Water Conservation Fund. Again, a reminder, the layout, this, of course, uh, this is a very busy, um...
Map.
...map or drawing because it has every tree, every bush that's in the park on it. But just to give you an ideal, here's the entry off of Division, uh, where, in the area of the old basketball court and the, uh, former waiting pool is where the splash pad will be. And then there will be five picnic pavilions. And we've tried to scatter those out to, uh, be cognizant of the historic nature of the park. We didn't want to, uh, overshadow the existing pavilion, so we tried to spread them out where it doesn't look like we've got a pavilion tree farm, uh, and...
Are those to scale, pretty much?
No. No, those are bigger because I wanted them to stand out to show your location. And this is the playground area, uh, that we'll be putting in all the new playground equipment. This is additional parking. We are not using curb and gutter, we will use, uh, stop blocks at the end of each of these parking places. These are all of the trails, they will be six foot wide. And I believe we have a walking trail for handicapped to get to every facility that we have in the park. Again, without curb and gutter, we should have, the, the water that falls in the park won't go away somewhere in a drainage system, it will just go to the edge and be soaked into the ground so that the same amount of water should get to the trees it gets to them today. So we've tried to think of, uh, look at it from, um, the, not damaging the trees in the future, we've looked at it from a historic standpoint, we looked at it from the ADA standpoint, and trying to make all those competing interests, uh, is, it's been a little challenging. Again, going with the railroad theme. This is, uh, what the shelters will look like, um, and then the playground and the splash pad will have the railroad theme.
Cool.
We, this was not an original part of the project, but we had identified the potential of adding a wheelchair swing to the project. As we did more research on it, we found out because of the weight, uh, those swings do not meet the safety standards in the US for swings, they've been used more in Europe. We've not given up the ideal of putting some of these, uh, wheelchair swings in various locations, but we're not going to do it, at least with this phase of the project, because we need to do some more research. There's been a couple of towns that have done it in the United States, they put fences around it and they give keys to families that have kids that are wheelchair-bound. Well, then what you do if you've got a visitor in town, they don't know who to call to get a key, I guess we could let one of you guys have a key and you could run down.
Don Channel will do that.
Anyway, we've not, we've not given up on that because I think it would be a nice feature to have, but we just got to work through the details on how to make that work. This project, we, we plan to advertise it for bids on October 5th, open bids on October 25th, uh, on November 5th, bring it to the city council to accept award, uh, and start construction in December of this year with a target date. Again, notice that word says target, not guarantee, uh, but a target date of April, we'd like to have this in place for this next summer.
Could we have it done before 89ers, please? That's a popular part for 89ers.
We'll try. The other, uh, grant project that we were funded early this year that was accepted was a CDBG grant to do some water system improvements. We got $224,000 in grant money and we're matching that with 375. These are very competitive grants to get. $600,000 project, again, we're ready to go out bids for it, uh, and our, uh... Did you hit the right one or I need to hit that? And that means we got to stay in the other hour. Plan to start construction on this on December 9th. This is just a breakdown of the various projects. You can see there's, uh, five water main projects of different lengths and then, uh, one of our problems in our system is how dated our valves are and, uh, having functioning valves when we need to shut off different areas, uh, when we have a leak so we don't have to shut off a, a larger area. And that's kind of shows the different lines that we will be replacing. And then these are valve projects. So those are kind of some of the projects we're working on that will be coming to you in the near future to, uh, consider awarding bids on. That's, that's my report.
Very good. Any questions, Leroy? Okay, number eight, comments from city council, Vice Mayor Thomas?
I don't have much, just, just enjoy the Bluegrass Festival this weekend and stay safe out there.
Councilman Case?
Nothing, not a thing.
Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, staff, appreciate, uh, staff's not all here tonight, but I appreciate what's here. Tenny's birthday's tomorrow, so I guess y'all might want to give him a cake or something. Other than that, that's it.
Councilman Bothroyd?
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Long?
I've had a couple of businesses ask about some, maybe some additional, um, benches along the street, I don't know if we can look into that from, uh, I don't have one down there on my block, I'd even be willing to sponsor one of those nice benches to go out front. I know that they're, where we get them, I don't know if a private individual can go buy them or not, but I've had a few people ask about that and, uh...
In the downtown area?
Yeah, yeah, I know there, like, there's not one in front of Boomerang. And so they, they've asked for one and there's been a couple others that have asked for some additional seating downtown. And, uh, while I'm still talking, we got a major skunk issue in this town? That I don't know if we got a dog catcher that would catch us some skunks or not, but in downtown district specifically. I don't know what made me just think of that now, but, uh, I'd like to share that with you. I'm on the record.
You are talking about the ones that, uh, walk on four?
Yes, four-legged, yeah, yeah.
Get a lot of vinegar, baking soda, and peroxide.
Man, I tell you, I saw four of them the other night, just in downtown area.
See what we can do.
No, I think that concludes the meeting. Appreciate it.
Councilman Charles?
Uh, it's October 1st, new budget's kicked in. If you were paying attention tonight, there's going to be a lot of stuff happening this year. I'm glad to see it moving forward. Hope everybody enjoys it.
Got a number of, uh, opportunities, uh, again, on some of our boards and commissions, forestry, board of adjustments, the convention visitors bureau, and planning have, have opportunities to, uh, for volunteer membership, uh, to get more engaged with, uh, with community. So, uh, go to our, go to our website, look and, uh, see how you make application and, get involved. We've got, uh, a groundbreaking coming up with Meridian, uh, that's, uh, next week, the ninth, I think it is. So that's, uh, that's a, another pretty important recognition of, uh, of moving forward for the city, so, um, that's really good. I think that's it. With that, city council is adjourned. And I'll call to order our Public Works Authority meeting of October 1st. We have two consent agenda items, A is the approval of the minutes of Special Public Works Authority meeting of September 10th, and B is the confirmation of the appointments to the Citizen Rate and Fee Advisory Committee, which were already listed. I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Subused.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval then of the consent agenda items A and B, that being the last item on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen.